I think we're gonna start this meeting. I'd like to start the school committee meeting for December 7th, 2017. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder that this meeting's being recorded, and please silence your mobile devices or any other devices. First, do we have any public comment this evening? Seeing none, then I'd love to invite our student reporters, Lamo Carroll and Caitlin Dolly, up to tell us what's up.
Second trimester's in its second week now, and winter sports are on track to do well in their second week.
And then also, it is the chorus concert tonight, and it's really exciting, because this is one of the first times that we're having, in addition to the normal choir. We're also in Skodan Black, we're also having the triple choir and the men's choir, which are new this year, so that's exciting. And then band is having their concert next Thursday.
And then we had a little report, we went out and looked into the meal policy changes being discussed today, and we wanted to talk about some opinions we got back, some responses.
Yeah, so I kind of got three main responses. One of the big ones was people saying that they think that people shouldn't be given full meals, but they should still be giving some sort of food for the day, whether it be muffins, or chips, or some veggies, but they think it's not right if they just don't get any food. Another response was that they didn't think that the policy should be changed. There was someone who told me that he is in the drama guild, and during tech week, he was so busy the night before that he didn't remember to bring in the check to reestablish his money. And so he ended up getting the lunch, and he was in like the zeros, but it ended up sustaining him because he didn't bring money for dinner either, and he was at the school till about 8 o'clock. So it was because of that that he was able to get food for the day, so he was really grateful for that policy at the time, so he didn't think that it should be changed. And then one other person had the idea, they used the example of the, in the Olympics, they have a refugee team, which is basically a team that doesn't have any other country to support them, sorry. And so she basically said, what if we did some fundraisers to create an account that doesn't belong to one person in particular, but if we're worried about the loss of money for anyone who for some reason didn't bring money the night before, that could be one way that we still have money and people can still get food for lunch.
Some opinions I got on it, one was that the basis for it makes sense in terms of responsibility and being able to, if you have an account, keeping that account in a positive balance, and so holding people accountable for not having money. But another person also said, well, doesn't that put people who are on reduced lunch and have a low income or a not stable income at a disadvantage if they're getting down to that number, and that's not a priority in their family situation economically? Doesn't giving them that cushion, isn't that helpful? And the other thing, and this is, I think, a little bit me personally, but I didn't find any statistics on how much that $5 cushion cost the school in the last year, or even two years ago. So just economically, where's the basis? That's the other thing.
Excellent that you've, how did you go about getting this feedback from your fellow students?
I was like, I personally don't normally buy lunch, I tend to pack, so I didn't myself have a bunch of, I'd never been in the zeros. So then I just asked some of my friends who seem to buy lunch every day, some classmates, some actually during lunch when I saw that they were buying, and those were the sentiments that I mostly got. Only one person thought of the idea for the other...
Slush fund?
Yeah, but I got, I think it might have been because I asked the people together, but when I asked people at lunch, they said that they thought the policy shouldn't change. When I asked people in classes, they thought that there should be an addition of some sort of snack or some other part of food if they don't have the money.
Yeah, specifically at lunch, I asked, I explained what it was and what the change was, and said, does this make sense? And overall, I think most people were like, not really, because there doesn't, because having that $5 just allows those family situations, those tech weeks, those small mistakes, it allows that cushion to save. And I would say for the most part, it sounded like from people I talked to who've had that situation, they ended up paying back through that $5, so, I mean, I, small sample size.
Right, right, no, but that's fantastic, I love the feedback.
Let me just ask you a quick question. So I know my kids are at Kittredge and the middle school right now, and so they just use the PIN system, right? So I think they have a four-digit number or something, and I get the report at the end of the month that says, "Ice cream, ice cream, chips." Is that common at the middle, at the high school, that they're using the PIN system? Or they, like, I know Kittredge, they don't bring in cash anymore. So at the high school, are they bringing cash and/or point of service? They can do both?
Yeah, they can do both. I know personally, I have a PIN system, but I tend not to use it only because I tend to forget my PIN. So I tend to bring in money, and I know specifically at the snack station, they have two lines, one's for cash and the PIN, and then one that's just for cash. And normally, the lines are pretty even, and so that kind of shows that a lot of people are using cash, but there is still a good amount of people using PIN.
I think it's people who know they're gonna buy lunch regularly, use the POS account, but people who are, tend to bring lunch, but, oh, I forgot my lunch today, or I just want to buy today, they pay in cash.
Right. Or nobody went to the grocery store. That's my house.
Yes. That's super helpful, thank you, that's gonna be helpful when we get to that topic a little bit later.
Awesome.
Thank you both very much. Excellent student input. So next, we have the consent agenda for the approval of the regular session minutes. I think there were two sessions here, yes. If we can look first at November 16th, 2016, which feels like a lifetime ago.
So I will move to approve the minutes as presented in the packet.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Witzke Lynch. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
I will move to approve the minutes of November 30th, 2017, as presented in the packet.
Second? Motion again by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Witzke Lynch. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five oh, great, thank you. Okay. So now we have the chair's report, so a couple of things. First, I'd like to congratulate in person Mr. Greg Gilligan, who was voted on Monday to be our next superintendent of schools, beginning July 1st, 2018. You deserve it, you've worked hard, we're excited for the next steps that you're gonna bring to the district, and congratulate you on a well-earned opportunity.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Also, we're gonna hear tonight, the announcement went out from Mr. Mailer, Mr. Trissy, and Dr. Price about the kindergarten building, that the contract was signed, we'll hear more about that, so that's exciting. But related to that is now, and this came up quite a bit during the tour that we were all on last year, about the kindergarten building, but it's, people almost every single time asked, what are you gonna name the building? How, is there a name? I have ideas for a name, what are we gonna name it? So it's time to start thinking about that, to start looking at that. And I do, I would like to ask Ms. Picard to spearhead, here it is, the thought and the process behind that, there are some policies involved, I print it out for you, I know you can look it up, but if you can take a look at that, and then maybe let us, at the next meeting, let us know kind of a window of time or what you're looking at. It involves the community, involves input from everyone, but ultimately, we would vote on that, so.
What was the last time we named a building in town? Is there anything recent we can refer to?
The track, right?
The track was a last structure, not a physical building. Prior to that, though, I think it was the ECC.
And did you actually vote to call it the Early Childhood Center?
I wasn't on the committee.
I don't think there was a naming process for that.
There was not.
I'm guessing not.
Naming process. You may wanna reach out, I don't remember who else was on the committee, but I think Chris Allen may have been on at that point, and I don't remember why they didn't go through that process at that point.
And is there any documentation about the track process?
Yes, it's all in the minutes.
And the policy, this, what you have is what was updated for that purpose?
Right, we updated that, I'm gonna say, spring of 2016, because we named the track in the fall of 16.
Okay, great, thank you, I'm happy to do that.
Yes, that'd be great, I think that the community would be excited about that. So far, we, ECC has still been working, because I think Dr. Price went from the Early Childhood Center to the Early Childhood Complex.
On what?
So that is certainly working at the moment, and maybe that's what people will want, we'll have to find out, but kind of an exciting thing to start thinking about. So thank you, Helen, for doing that. Some other things, we're gonna hear a little bit more from Dr. Price, but the middle school principal search discussions have started, and the job is posted, so we'll hear more about that. And then also, wanted to let everyone know that Senator Edward Markey is hosting a town hall meeting on Sunday, December 10th, this Sunday, from 5:00 to 6:30 at Maloney Hall at UMass Lowell. So if people are interested in attending something like that, that is happening this Sunday. And those are my big updates.
Just two notes for anyone watching at home, we do have that wonderful concert at the high school right now, and we have the Music Man at the middle school, so...
This weekend.
This weekend and this evening, but also this weekend, so you might wanna turn us off and go see them.
Are those likely to be recorded, too?
I think we're saying, we're getting a yes.
Yes, thank you. And I'm pretty sure the Music Man has been telling.
I got to listen to the chorus practice, they were phenomenal. And it was really fun to watch Ms. Durkin lead the charge, she's incredible. So I wanted to say to the school committee, I'm really excited that you chose Mr. Gilligan to be the next superintendent of schools, although I tried to remain silent, which is something very hard for me to do, during the process, I think you made an outstanding choice. As you can imagine, Greg and I have discussed at length how to navigate the next six months. Specifically, we see the focus in terms of transition over the next three months to be hiring a middle school principal and the assistant superintendent of schools. In addition, I want to remind everyone that Mr. Gilligan needs to focus on becoming Dr. Gilligan, and we all need to give him the time and space to do that, which is not gonna end until the beginning of April. And so one thing that I have been doing is supporting him, and actually, Mr. Mealy, in their doctoral program, and it's really crunch time for Greg, and we really need to support him to get him this time and space, because once he becomes superintendent, he's not gonna have that time and space, and I think it's better for all of us to have him Dr. Gilligan before July 1. Once we get through April break, we both feel that it's time to really focus on ensuring a smooth transition in other areas, such as working with all of you, leadership meetings, and deliberately over time, assuming the full role of superintendent. Of course, I will be fully engaged here until my last day on June 30th, but the plan is to ensure that North Andover Public Schools do not miss a beat on July 1.
I'm so excited and humbled by my selection as superintendent, and I really want to thank the search committee and the school committee for letting me engage in such a thoughtful and rigorous process. I'm thrilled to continue the momentum we've attained with our strategic plan and believe great things are in store for the North Andover Public Schools. I look forward to a smooth transition and one that fully prepares me to serve as superintendent when Dr. Price departs, June 30th. I appreciate her attention to ensuring that I have the time and space to complete my doctorate, which is a lot of hours at night writing downstairs away from the kids. Also, I aim to make sure that I'm fulfilling my duties as assistant superintendent so we can continue to focus on consistent and rigorous curriculum. As you probably know, the hiring of the middle school principal and my replacement for assistant superintendent are both critical to our future progress here and their major undertakings. I'm confident together that Dr. Price and I will work collaboratively, as we always have, and to make this transmission, transition a smooth and successful one. And I really want to thank you, once again, for such a thoughtful process, I appreciate it.
Very good. Exciting, exciting times. School building committee, on to the next exciting time. Mr. Trissy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just first and foremost, I just wanna extend my thanks again to the school building committee. The appointments that Martha Salwa made as moderator, Tom Zirico, Evan Mori, Maureen Zachacini, and Kathleen Caldwell, our appointments, Christina Minicucci and Todd McCabe, I can't say enough about the school building committee, the hours that they put in, the expertise that they brought. They all have just a little bit of construction and building experience, and it's been, I just, I think, a great committee to work with. I'm definitely the least qualified person on the school building committee, that's probably why I'm chairman. But it's been a, it's been a great experience working with them. We've worked hard since May, and even though we are not, their work is not done by any such imagination, I think this, what we've accomplished in the last five months is the bulk of a real heavy lift, and I can't thank them enough for all the hours they've put in, and that they're going to put in in their future. So obviously, the message went out, but just to clarify, a contract has not been signed yet. It has not been signed yet. So we selected Triumph Modular, they're the company that built the ECC.
ECC, yeah.
Yeah, ECC. And we feel very, very good about working with them again. I think the experience prior was very good, they built a great product, and we're very confident they're gonna build a great product, a addition, whatever you wanna call it here. So the way it works, it was an RFP process, obviously. We received their proposal. The thing about an RFP process, you don't need to just accept their bid, everybody knows that. They submitted a bid number. After that, you know, we started to negotiate with them. That negotiation is still ongoing, but we have come to basically an agreement in principle, I would say, on where we're at, there's a few little small items we're trying to iron out. I would expect, so the committee did vote last night to authorize the town manager to execute the contract. I would probably say by Monday or Tuesday, we would have that in, you know, Andrew's hands. And in that vein, I'd like to just extend my sincere thanks to Mr. Mailer, who has been just so helpful in so many different ways. It's a lot trickier than, I think, when we talked about this last year, before you two were on the board. You know, the site is, you know, it's a tricky site, there's a lot going on out there. So there's a lot of moving parts in that, as far as the site work goes, and obviously, as you know, Ms. Mayble, the middle school fields adds a, that whole project adds another dynamic to it. But Andrew has been at so many meetings, and Ray Santilli has been at so many meetings, being supportive and helpful most of the time, with some of their suggestions. But it's been a great process, it's been a lot of work, and I'm really honored that, you know, you folks let me take on this project. I'm not sure my wife's been happy about the time I've spent away from doing it, but I feel really good about where we're at, and I'm really excited that now, because I'm talking about something really fun, like, you know, naming it after somebody, or something, or whatever. So again, we're moving ahead, it's been a great experience, and I don't know if there are any questions about it, but our Jen or Jim, who have been there every step of the way as well, you know, if you have anything you wanna add to the, what's gone on the last five, six months. I feel like this is just a huge benchmark that we've got to, you know, so.
I will, I will echo your comments on the school building committee, they are very good. And they have gotten us to the point where now it's the contractor's responsibility, they've done most of the heavy lifting, but they are very good.
Yeah, and we'll obviously have to keep their feet to the fire with the help of our OPM and architect, but you know, what they've accomplished over the last, it's definitely, definitely been a lot more work than I had suspected, but happy I could participate in it.
It's been fun coming off of negotiations.
It's a different kind of fun. That was a challenging, but ended up being a very worthwhile experience for myself, personally and professionally, working with the teachers and all that, but this has been an eye-opening experience about what it takes to get something really off the ground. That I thought we did a lot of work last fall to decide upon the, it was a year ago. Yeah, it was about a year ago, wasn't it, we decided on, it was a year ago, it was a year ago, right? That probably was the first week in December, we decided to go with Plan 3A, or Plan 3B, I think it was called back then. And to see where that was, and how, I gotta say, how simple that, what we approved was, and where we're at now, it's just, it's night and day, so. Anyways, we're moving forward, I really think we're gonna deliver a product towns can be proud of, and that, you know, come next August, whoever's, you know, still here, and who's not, will come back, I'm sure, and...
If you'll invite me.
Oh, you'll definitely be invited, you'll definitely be invited, so. Anyways, that's the update for now.
And I would say that, you know, there are a lot of other aspects of opening the building that we're spending a lot of time on, from start times to bus routes, to staffing the building, which we're gonna talk a lot about during the budget season, to moving. We have an amazing member of the school building committee who is a relocation expert, Eva, and he is gonna, she's volunteering all of her time to help us do the packing and moving, and she does this for a living. And so, you know, it's all those types of things that, you know, at this point now, there's a lot of time on the minutia and the details, so that we can make sure that it opens, it opens furnished, it opens staffed, it opens on time, the kids get picked up. You know, parents don't have to wait for forty, you know, four hours to drop their kids off. I mean, there's a lot of things we're thinking about, and so, you know, to the teachers out there and to the staff, please know we're thinking a lot about that. If there's other things we're not thinking about, we have a Google Doc that we're working with the ECC staff and the kindergarten teachers to ask us questions. So although the building is moving forward, there's a lot of details that are still to be thought about.
Yeah, especially revolving on the traffic, because obviously, we have to deal with the state on the highway issue and stuff, and as some of you may know, there's another project going on right up the street at Chikering and Mass Ave.
Mass Ave, yeah.
Yeah, so there's some coordination involved there. So we're obviously focusing on a temporary traffic plan and a permanent traffic plan, as far as that goes.
So one thing, when I was at the Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, there were some residents who got up and spoke, and they were, they happen to live basically on the corner of Chikering and Mass Ave.
That's where it is, yeah.
And are very concerned about what that is and how that's gonna look. And Mr. Mailer, I think, was pretty clear that really nothing's gonna be happening there for about 18 months. So I'm just wondering if you had conversations, or if you can kinda help us understand a little bit of what may be happening for August of 2018, and then, you know, we're gonna have more changes, you know?
Well, again...
Concealed be, you know, nine months or so after that.
I don't wanna, there's nothing definitive at this point, but I do expect that the proposed traffic light at that new entrance would not be in place by then, and we're already talking about having, obviously, a police officer there during the morning and during the afternoon at dismissal times. That's already been talked about with the town, as well as, obviously, our site engineer. So it's, that will definitely be in place, that's one of the temporary stopgap measures I mentioned. I wouldn't expect that traffic light to be in, no way, by August. That I will say definitively, the traffic light will not be in by August 2018.
When can we expect to see plans for the building?
They're on, if you go and look, the ECC website expansion, it's all there.
They're all there.
Those are the ones from last year, or?
No, we, every, every meeting, we update.
Every meeting, there's updates, but if people want hard copies, I'm sure we can produce some hard copies for you, because honestly, I have a tough time looking at them on my computer as well. I have so many pieces of paper, I feel bad for all the trees, but it just, all the iterations and details, it's just easier to read, so I'll be happy for our next meeting, if not sooner, to try to get you some hard... Yeah, bring some hard copies of the finals.
But you can also look there, I mean, every meeting, it's updated minutes.
Okay, great.
Very exciting times, I'm very grateful to the committee, that's, and all the hard work that's been done, and will continue to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Trissy? Great, so we're on to our North Andover High School and middle school presentations this after, this evening, this afternoon.
It's exciting to have Dr. McQuade and Mr. Jackson here. It's sort of fun to look at the two of you, one in your final year of your principalship, and one in the first. And, you know, again, as with the elementary school principals, we ask them, it's not the whole overview, it's just what are we working on, what do we have for success? So if it's all right, Dr. McQuade was gonna go first about the middle school, and then turn it over to the less experienced, Mr. Jackson. So Joan, you're up.
Well, math, I'm gonna get one of those buttons, this is, I love math. All three grades did a great job, we had a lot of impressive scores, as you can see. Seventh grade in particular, again, just made significant impressive scores and growth. While their median growth went down a little bit, if you flip to where the IEP students are, they are 62, which is great, and then also the high needs and IEP students also did well in the high and very high range, which contributes. That big line of purple are all those kids that scored growth high, so that's exciting for us. Sixth grade math also went up a lot, if you look over into the chart on the left for their growth, and that was really exciting for them. They, I asked them what they thought happened, and one thing they did is they looked at curriculum a little bit differently, and they moved the ratios into September, which is a foundation of middle school math, and they think that made a big difference. And they also spent a little bit more time looking at the Common Core, and I think as our staff turns over and different perspectives come to NAMs as teachers, it just brings a different lens, so I think there's collaboration strengthened, so they did a good job. Eighth grade as well, their growth score, if you look at the bottom, excuse me, the top, 36 to 52. Ever since we started AMS four years ago, we didn't see the growth in eighth that we had hoped, and this year we did. So interestingly, there was a lot of angst about computer-based testing and math at the middle school. So the math, eighth grade math teachers found a free program called Edge Elastic that helped kids could learn how to do math on the computer. So they practiced, and they practiced, and they practiced, and they think that made a difference in a lot of ways of how the kids did math on the computer, and also a stronger link to the Common Core. So we thought that those were all interesting things that impacted in a very positive way. So our challenge will be just continuing and sustaining all the growth in math that we continue to see, so it's good stuff.
Before you go, Joan, I think I...
Yeah.
I'm remiss, I'm remiss if I don't say that, and this is now the fourth straight year, I think, of seventh grade student growth percentiles that are around 80, which is stunning.
Yep.
Stunning. I, you, find me another school district that has student growth percentiles in a specific grade for four-year trend. I mean, it is a, and I know that this committee made a very difficult choice around applied math and science, and it clearly has given our kids a better foundation for math, and it's, it cannot be overestimated how stunning that is. An median SGP of 80, unheard of in the state, so.
Well, thank you, Dr. Price, and I think, just now that you opened the door for me to brag some more. One thing I think, because when we talked about this class four years ago, or five years ago now, there's a lot of discussion about time on learning. But as I've watched the class evolve over the last four years, it's bigger than that. It's more about how the teachers teach, how they interact with the kids, how they engage the kids in both math and AMS, and the six of them together, when they share ideas and, you know, switch things around, and it's pretty magical to watch, and I think the scores support that, so it's exciting stuff.
Let me ask you a question there. So when we're looking, for example, at sixth grade in 2016, at 42, is that the student population that is seventh grade 79?
Yeah.
Okay, so we then go from seventh grade at 80 last year, or I guess two years ago, to 52, is that correct?
Correct, but remember, once they get, they pre-test, they get put in a higher bucket, right? So they, they score higher, so now they're against all of those kids. So a 52 growth, which is state average, or a little bit above, is actually a good average for kids who took a significant jump the year before. Our concern was 36, because that was, are we losing?
Right, I was trying to figure out...
But at 52, they are sustaining that growth, that's how to read that.
Okay, I was trying to figure out if, if there was a ladder process to that or not.
But if you remember, last year, Joan highlighted the 36, saying, we're making all these growth in seventh grade, and we're concerned we're losing that trajectory.
Right.
52 means we're steady state, a little bit better.
Okay.
And you mentioned that the, everyone was worried about the anxiety of taking the test computer, and that the eighth grade found something to work with. Are you looking at sharing that among the other grades as well, or?
Oh, absolutely, because one of the teachers, because I kept pushing them, I'm like, come on, what else did you guys do? And so between nature's class and all that kinda stuff, and we were a little busy in eighth grade this year. But, so one of the teachers said, you know, we really practiced a lot on the computer with that Edge Elastic program. It was free, they always have to tell me when something's free.
Right.
And so, yeah, we'll definitely look at that for the other two grades, absolutely.
Thanks.
All right, and then our focus areas this year, as I could previously said, sustaining the math will be a challenge, but our ELA scores in sixth grade, one of the things that, they were a little blindsided by that, about our scores in sixth grade, and they, there's four... four ELA teachers in sixth grade. And we talked about all the different things. One thing that they have determined is that they need to increase the frequency of the multiple test, excuse me, multiple text analysis in their lesson planning. They felt that they got a little bit blindsided with all the different moving parts in the change in the tests this year, or, excuse me, last year. And so they didn't really spend enough time going deep into having students work with compared, repaired tasks and multiple texts, and then also writing about that. So they're gonna increase a lot with that. They've already started. Another thing that they've decided, and this was actually a wonderful experience for me to walk in on, they were at their collaboration meeting, this was about three weeks ago. And one, they had their computer open, they had Bloom Taxonomy open, two of them were at the whiteboard, and they were trying to figure out ways to raise the level of questioning to higher order thinking in our upcoming novel, which some of you know, Talk Everlasting. So to hear them work that through, and one of their rationales for really pushing their thinking on this was, they felt like the kids, when they answer a question, really needed to answer it and look at it in a more analytical way, instead of just put the answer down. So that's something that they think will make a big difference in sixth grade this upcoming year. So that's one of the big changes that they're gonna be making. Seventh grade, again, did pretty well in ELA. So again, when we look at their growth scores, they went up. And I don't know, I don't, Gilli, you probably remember, a few years ago, we were concerned about seventh grade with the long comp and the scores.
My daughter's here, actually.
Yeah, that was, we were concerned about that.
We had that big dip that year.
Yeah, a big dip.
The current sophomores, yeah.
Yep. And another thing that has occurred in seventh grade the last couple of years is just some change in staff, you know, retirements and all of that. A significant increase in cross-curriculum writing with social studies in ELA. Right down to about a month ago, I walked into a social studies collaboration meeting, and you, you would've thought you were sitting in an ELA meeting. I had three social studies teachers, they had their rubrics out, they had Lucy Cawkins out, they had shared student writing, and they were re, each reading it and deciding how would you score it, what would that look like, and it's three social studies teachers. So that is a significant growth for instructional practice in writing. And then eighth grade, you know, after looking at their scores and kind of where they're at as a team, they definitely need to increase the level of collaboration, from my perspective. We talked about that last week. They need to look at a little more strength with alignment. I mean, they're doing okay. But they are the, the last of our three grades to really start bringing on Lucy Cawkins. We are, Lorraine Marx has been working with us, but not the extent that they have with the elementary. So we've been kind of homegrown in eighth grade, as well as sixth and seventh. But lots of growth as far as working with Lucy Cawkins. Amy Hart, the ELA coordinator, I was speaking with her recently, just about frequency of use of the Lucy Cawkins mini lessons and how does that blend in with their already existing curriculum. So they'll be looking at that actually next week, on how they're going to kind of balance that out and see where that takes the eighth grade in writing. And then special education did pretty good this year, from what we can, you know, see. We're excited about that. One thing Carol Larkome brought to us to think about, so we jumped on it, was to have map testing for all our students on IEPs. And that gave us the baseline data for this year for ELA and math. So they're using that. Our goal with that is to then bring in more database instruction into our learning centers. And we also made a learning center shift this year. We, for two reasons. One, it's tough for students to miss a related art when they have to go to learning center every day. So we, we organized a little bit in learning center. So a student who goes to learning center will go every other day now. So they have one day of learning center and one day of related arts. And what that accomplishes is less students in the learning center and more targeted instruction. So we're looking at that to see how that works so far. It's looking like it's pretty good. And with some of the scheduling changes we made this year, this is the first year that we have an opportunity for our special ed teachers to also meet and collaborate with general ed during the day, all three grades. So we're seeing some growth there, too. So excited about that. And one more, science. However, they're in the dark ages with paper-based testing, but that'll change this year.
Not this year.
Not this year. But they actually went up a little bit. I know we've talked for years about, you know, about our eighth grade science, wishing that we had more kids, you know, in the higher achievement levels and that kind of stuff. But seventh grade is implementing a new science curriculum, and eighth grade is on deck. And we also have a new teacher in eighth grade as well, who is, three of them have come up with a lot of fun stuff. STEM exhibition will be in March, so it's on the calendar as of today. So they're excited about that.
It's been a big topic of conversation.
Yeah.
Very fun. That's a very fun.
Yeah, we'll be at the high school again. So excited, yeah.
Happy to have them.
I know, it's fun.
It is.
So anything else on that? You're up.
All right.
So, thank you.
All right. I put together, on behalf of the high school, I think, seven slides to break this up into a few parts. The first couple of slides are gonna focus on some areas that we'd like to celebrate, based on our scores. Then I gotta transition into levels of collaborations and work we've done at the district level and high school level around the fishbone. And then go into three specific areas that we tried to connect to the strategic plan with some work we're doing this year at the high school. All right. Our first two slides outline our three high school MCAS subjects. And we wanted to give a little bit of a historical perspective on how students have been achieving in the areas of advanced and proficient scores and in student growth percentile for all students. We can celebrate our students with an increase in the previous year in all three of the testing areas. It's really a testament to our entire staff as a whole and their hard work in preparing and improving. You could see a five percent increase in math, a three percent in ELA at the top, and then a one percent up in biology. But I also want to note for the science at the bottom there, that consistently, over about the last five years that they've been keeping that data, we've been seventeen to eighteen percent above the state average in biology. And some very strong work going on there. Really want to credit our specific department coordinators, Amy O'Terry in science, Debbie Daly in math, and Carrie Caffrey-Zwining in ELA for their work on some of this material. On the second slide, it's already there. Excellent. Shows an increase in ELA and student growth percentile, back up to forty-nine for this past testing year. And in mathematics, we went up to fifty-two and a half, which is an all-time high for us in math. Last year in math, one of our focus areas was with students with disabilities and with high needs. I know, I think Ms. Holman and our administration at the high school spent some time talking about that. Our SGP for math for students with disabilities went from a thirty-nine to a fifty-seven. And for high needs, went from a thirty-eight and a half up to fifty-three. Again, I think, just a testament to our teachers and specifically our special education teachers. They've worked through, worked with our content area teachers with some collaboration time, the special ed department, to embrace some change into our co-teaching models that really helped push the rigor at ninth and tenth grade for our students. So.
So just to remind, we had those co-teaching presentations, and we really, for those of you who've been on the committee long enough, if you remember, that thirty-six median SGP in math, when I arrived, we focused on that, made some significant changes that year, the co-teaching the following year. And it's exciting to see the overall change is significant and that for students on IEPs, that the, the more inclusive approach is really paying off. Great work.
Thank you. I just wanted to include a couple of slides to highlight some of the work we did this summer. The diagram up now looks at a fishbone diagram that Dr. Price, we worked on this summer with our district collaboration team. One of the things we do in the summer, there's a very large group, and we had a lot of new members this year. It's really fun to come in and identify areas of practice and kind of look at all the work we do. And we focus really, as it moves from that center to the right, on improving learning for all students. So one of the things we did at the high school when we met with my leadership team for the first time, is really take a look at that NAPS fishbone and identify some areas that we wanted to concentrate on at the high school during our collaboration. So I get to meet with my assistant principals for the first time, directors, special ed and guidance, and our department coordinators, and come up with specific areas connected to that NAPS fishbone that we could focus on in collaboration time. So the last three, three slides will go into kind of some specific areas that probably hit all six of those areas, all six of those topics in the fishbone, and how we connect it to improving the learning of all of our students. That's the high school one right there. All right. First one, you know, strategic plan, as Dr. Price and the team have been going through for a couple of years here, one of our connections is to work with all students. We've been fortunate enough this past year to receive some support from Dr. Price, Mr. Gilligan, Mr. Mealy, and Dr. Straight around professional development and professional development money that allowed us to support our co-teacher pilot program that's moved into one of our initiatives. We were able to coordinate some research for better teaching and use Simone Consulting to come up to the high school. Sue McGregor, who's come up in the fall, is gonna be here in January, has done some great work with our co-teachers to have them work together, identify and share best practices, and more importantly, give them time to kind of reflect, learn, and grow. So appreciative of that time. Next slide is around consistent and rigorous curriculum. And I wanted to highlight a few bullets there. Oh, that just, we, actually, we want to go back to the previous slide for a second. I wanted to add a couple more things there. Yeah. Just our, that specific work on formative assessment to guide small group, using scaffolds, really looking at how we really improve student engagement and use a seventy-minute block has been key. As we've gone around through the district level and go from school to school, we were able to host the district leadership team and get into several classrooms focused around and get some feedback around student engagement, which was also very helpful to us. All right. All right. Around consistent and rigorous curriculum, we've done a lot of work over the last several years in documenting course curriculum at the high school. Our department coordinators always do a wonderful job working with our teachers on coming up with goals every year within departments. And we always have some actions around there. It's a little bit similar to what Joan talked about, where teachers come in and during collaboration time, present their assessment, their common assessments, or student work during our collaboration time, with the hopes that that, those assessments can be tuned and improved, and also that our grading can be calibrated. We've been fortunate enough to have people like Alicia Murray at central office that can compile and go through that M-class data and kind of get us topics for our departments and department coordinators to review with teachers. Mr. Gilligan has met this year monthly with our department coordinators to look at some DESI data as well. A couple of areas we've adjusted have been getting statistics back into grade nine and grade ten, really into algebra at the start of the school year. And also adding a co-taught English ten class this year to sophomores to focus in looking at our class dynamic for world studies. So there's been a couple of specific areas we've done this year. Last slide, last slide is one of the areas that I'm most excited about and passionate about, has been opening our practice. Our high school leadership team was able to sit down in the summer toward the beginning of the fall and create a system where we could have teachers plan and conduct peer-to-peer observations each trimester. We're using a portion of our collaboration time for teachers to meet with each other, receive feedback from each other, share and learn different strategies, and reflect on that practice. Students have noticed our teachers being in each other's classroom, which is a very cool thing. For, it gives us a chance to model that we're also looking to improving because we want them to do that and take those risks in the classroom. Dr. Price has modeled with our leadership team opening the practice. We do our district walkthroughs every month at different schools. We've had FCI's from the elementary and middle, or mental school, elementary school teachers join us. Our department coordinators have joined us to allow us to kind of work on our practice and delivering feedback and what, you know, good focuses on student engagement could look like. Mr. Gilligan and Dr. Price have also supported our leadership team by providing an administrative, new administrator training for our department coordinators and our new administrators that mirrored our supervision and evaluation system. So that's ongoing throughout the year to allow us support as we kind of move through the year on that. So a lot of exciting stuff going on at the high school. I'm happy to have the opportunity to share that with you guys.
Mr. Mealy, can you go back to Mr. Jackson's first slide for me, just for a second? So if you look at the percentage of kids scoring advanced and proficient this year, this past year, the highest in a, what, ten-year history here, or ten-year history of the North Andover Public Schools in all three subjects, other than maybe equal in another year. But it's pretty amazing that we've been able to make that kind of progress. And it's nice, because remember, this is the legacy MCAS, so you can actually compare these across the years. It's the only place we can. But to have, you know, ninety-seven percent of our kids in ELA scoring advanced or proficient, ninety-one in math and, and, and science, I mean, that's the, the highest it's been for over a decade. And I, I just think that the high school should get a shout-out for that. That's exciting.
Yeah, it actually goes to the work of the middle school and elementaries, too. And I know often times we talk about our staffs and really focus on those MCAS subjects, but all our teachers in the high school have been focused on writing the last couple of years. So it's really something we can celebrate as a school, which is hard to do sometimes when you're putting specific data.
And it demonstrates a commitment to those kids who are scoring needs improvement and moving them into the advanced and proficient, right? It's about some of our struggling learners and how we best support them. For the vast majority of our kids, they're gonna get into advanced and proficient. But how have we moved those struggling learners from needs improvement into advanced and proficient, and moved those struggling learners from warning into needs and improvement, right? Like, that's what this is about, and it's exciting to see.
Mr. Jackson, could you talk a little bit about, you mentioned them, about the, the new department coordinators. This is, having them back, you've only, I know it's only been a few months, but how do you see that impacting what's happening at the high school?
Yeah, I think it impacts the building in a very positive way. I think our teachers are able to get some support at a content level that we haven't necessarily been able to do with assistant principals or maybe central office support. I think it's been critical for them to get back in the classroom and really see some of the work we've been doing as departments, and be able to come plan and say, hey, this is why, go back to teachers and plan. I also think that for my end of it, for them to receive feedback on classroom observations and to really get in and have that lens at a content level, they can add some improvement and allow some teachers to grow. Things like world language that maybe a, a building administrator may not have a specific knowledge on a language or something like that. We now have someone that can do that. So it's been very positive so far. I think one of the things I'll have to do later in the year is come up and get that feedback mechanism from the teachers and on just the structure as a whole.
And Mr. Jackson, kudos to you and your two assistant principals, because the relationship between the principal, the assistant principals, and the department coordinators have been really positive. I mean, so each assistant principal has departments they work with, and that has become, I can see it, I'm sure Mr. Gilligan can comment, it's been wonderful to see that, that relationship that we negotiated, where they both have to observe together and all of that. It's really playing out.
That's good.
And Chet's ability to bring that relationship to where it is in such a short time, to open up this year to peer observations, teachers seeing teachers. You just don't see that at high schools this large, with the trust and, and the belief in what the leadership wants to accomplish. I mean, it's pretty amazing.
Great. So it's having the impact that you were all hoping, it sounds like, pretty quickly.
Yeah, so far. Well, hopefully pull, build on that momentum and keep going.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know. I love, I love your.
On to the concert.
No, it's great. Good job.
Thank you, guys.
I like that first and final.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty interesting. All right. Now we're on to the, further discussing the budget directives for this next budget cycle.
So if you remember last time, you guys asked me to take a crack at rewriting them, which I did. So, you know, and basically, there's, there's a few things I want to discuss. I'll come back to the ten percent question mark at the end, if that's okay with you. I did add a full new budget bullet on directives. And the reality is, we need to ensure that we have the needed resources to open the new ECC with the appropriate staffing and supports. I, I will tell you, in the early work I'm doing on this budget, that's pretty much what you're gonna see, is opening the ECC. It's, it's not inexpensive to open a new, a new building. And I think the vast majority, if not all of the budget, and we'll talk about it, is gonna be around that. So I thought we should put it in there, just to be transparent about that directive. And then, to me, it's, I just changed to continue to have sufficient access to the technology and continue to provide faculty up-to-date instructional materials. We have made really significant progress on those, and so I just added the continue part. Back to the ten percent. Mr. Mealy, there's a, there's a chart that's connected to this one, two?
One.
Um, no, I think it was another click that I asked Ms. Zagari to have connected to this one. No, did she not do that? Okay, sorry. So, darn. So, darn. Do you have it, the one that, that I sent to Mr. Mailer about the, do you mind unplugging for a second to see? The one, the budget that I sent to Mr. Mailer about that he included in his five-year forecast?
The chart.
The chart. So what I'll say, and I apologize, we meant to link this, is that, actually, I think it's best if we can get the chart and we can move on and then I'll. Give you two seconds because I really want to talk through this in a really smart way and I apologize, we should have linked it. So, let me, yeah, do you want to do this council trips and I'll go run and make, send it to you, Mr.?
That sounds fine. So we'll put that aside for a moment and go on to the second reading then. Of the North Andover High School Student Council Trip to, I believe, Hyannis. Which we looked at last time. Which is an annual trip, it's for the student council members. It's there, it's kind of like their annual meeting, statewide meeting.
Kind of like Decan where they get together.
Right, right. Were there any other questions on this?
Just very quickly, I mean, where they're taking a bus, two nights in hotels, conference registration fees and all of that, $350, is that all total? I'm going to sneeze upstairs.
That's what it sounds like, so I'm assuming, yeah, that's bus, two nights in a hotel is a hundred bucks each, usually a hundred something, right? That's all, that's all I see too.
Okay, I just wanted to make, it, I thought it was all-inclusive, I just wanted to be.
That's, I think that's food, everything.
Okay.
But I don't.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Mr. Trissy, second by Mr. McDevitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great trip.
Have fun.
That's the only one, yeah, and then we have new business. I don't think we can do the new business without Dr. Price either, so.
Want to go to B, we can start talking on B if you want to talk about B.
Yeah, that's, that's, oh, here she is. Okay, great, all right.
I appreciate it.
Perfect, so we just approved that trip to the student council.
And I didn't have to say a word.
You didn't. I'm passing the baton. So, so in terms of, we had talked last year about having a 10% having, if you remember. Something that felt, felt really resonated with us is how many of our classes are above the guidelines that you guys established? It's really hard, we've done all this work, we've got all these classes and our average class size has gone down to .4. How do we quantify that for kids? So just to look at this chart and I really want to talk through the guidelines for this year.
Oh, yeah.
You can see.
Can you make it bigger? I gotta get a glasses.
You can see that it's restarting, huh? Yeah. So you can see, you can't see a thing, actually. All right, so you can see I'm going to stand up for a second, here it comes. There we go, we're having fun. All right, here we go, yay!
Good job, Mr. Mealy.
So you can see in the 2013-14 school year, when it was at its height, actually in 2012. 53% of our classes were above what we would recommend as the right class size averages for our kids. And you can see over the last bunches of years, we have been moving that down. And if you remember, last year we approved four additional classrooms at the elementary level. And we went from 43% two years ago to this year where 29% of our classes are above the averages. So that's a significant change and that's exciting to see our goal of trying to reduce class sizes. And this is what I want to kind of talk about here. Last year we approved four. If we need to draw one of those four back to be able to fund the opening of the ECC. And let's, let's assume that all of the K classes are below the 22. Which because we can level out K, if we have fewer than 320 students enroll, we will be lower than 22, right? Making sense? So the challenge is, we don't know with K, it's so hard to know, right? You just don't, you just don't know. So hopefully that it will be fewer than that. So anyways, if we draw one back into the K to open it up to pay for the counselors and the, you're going to see the speech and language and the, the nurses and all of that. If we have to do that, and I'll show you the budget of that, we're assuming it will be about 18.3%. If we're able to keep the elementary level, which is at 94 classrooms, and by elementary, I mean one through five.
Four through five.
All right, this 94 actually includes the 15K. But if we are not having to draw back the one through five, that fourth grade, that fourth teacher, and how do we do that? We added a fifth grade at Atkinson, they're not going to need it next year. So that like becomes the open one we can draw back. Frankly, there's other places we could put it though, so, right? If we were able to do that, we're actually, we'd get to 14.9%. And if, you know, manna from heaven comes and we get an additional teacher, we're looking at 11.6%. So you're looking about each teacher is about 3%, obviously. So this is what I want us to say, like, I don't see us getting to 10% next year. Happy to keep it as an aspirational goal. But as we look forward and we staff based on what we know, and obviously we're staffing on numbers now and they will change between now and June. But we're doing our best projecting forward. I'm happy to keep this as an aspirational goal and I think in some cases it's good to have an aspirational goal. But I also don't want to articulate to you that I really think we can get there at 10%. I think we can be easily below 20.
You're looking at your worst case as 18.
Yes, well, the worst case is if we get 350 kids to register for kindergarten.
Right, right, okay.
This is, this is a, I mean, that's a great goal to have.
But this is a budget directive. This is, you're going to formulate your budget on this. And I think that is, I don't say pie in the sky, but that's going to be tough to meet.
Yep.
You know, I, I think you keep it at the 18.3 as, as the directive. And you're going to give us a budget of, of, of 18, at 18.3.
Right, and we may push, I mean, I, I'm in some conversations, we might be able to get to the 14.9. I think the 11.6 is not going to happen.
Right, right.
I, I think that work in that short period of time going from 50 down to 18.3 in four years is incredible. And that's, 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 that's great progress. And we can have our goals, our next superintendent will have the goal for, for 14.9 next year or maybe it's 11.6. But I mean, that, that's great work.
It's exciting.
I think it's important to point out too that when you add a classroom, you're not impacting one class. If you have four classes that are over at Franklin or Sargent, you're impacting four classes by adding it because you're bringing them all below the.
In line with you, well, that's why the 43 to 29 happened so fast, yeah.
The 13, 14 year, we spent a month at the end of the summer, the beginning of the year, trying to place kids.
Right.
That, because so many classes were capped.
And my feeling is, not to put any pressure on too soon to be Dr. Gilligan. I think you can get to 0% in the next two budgets, I really do think you can. I think if this is a concerted effort, I mean, I, I think you can get there. And I, and I, and I think, you know, 25 in a class is still a lot of kids. And so those are reasonable goals. But I, I think once we get the K open, once we have the space, because that's always been a constraint. And once we have kind of the rest of the systems and structures in place, I think the vast majority of the budget increases can go into tackling this goal.
Yeah.
So I think you can get to zero, I just don't think we're going to get to 10 next year. So I would maybe argue that we put below 20% or something like that in these guidelines. Just wanted to be transparent and thanks for your patience, I thought the slide would be helpful.
No, it's very.
Can you make sure we get that forwarded to us?
Yes, that's a great slide.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was really excited when Andrew put that up on his five-year, when the town manager put that up on Monday night. It was, you know, it's just nice to see that, that's, the schools are the town, the towns are the schools. It's not two separate entities like it is in a lot of the communities. You know, and it's great that we have a superintendent and a town manager that understand that.
And I was excited that he wanted to present the slide.
Yeah, and he spoke to it beautifully too.
So is below 20% okay?
I think that's fine.
I actually would be comfortable with 15. And I'll tell you why, I mean, I, I think if, if we're able to go back and I know Mr. Mealy just went through, but.
Want to go back to it?
Yeah, for a second.
If it's right there, it is, yeah. I mean, that, that scenario too, right, is we'd be under that, right? So that's pushing us to try to get to that. I feel like if we say it's under 20 or, or at 20, we know we're already making that, right? So there is no.
Push.
Push exactly, right, for that to be there. And I don't want to necessarily have a goal and we can look at this and say, we've already met it, great. Do I think we're going to get to it, you know, no, but are we going to make any steps incrementally to get there? And I think that that's the key.
Yeah, I mean, I think either way, we're going to have to have this conversation. So it's going to be a conversation where regardless of what number you put here, the conversation is going to be, how do we staff the, the K? And maintain what we're doing in the three through five. I mean, that's, that's the budget conversation this year, right?
And, and I'm okay if we're not hitting 10, right?
Right.
You know, and, and I think realistically, we may be at 18.3. But I think then it gives us the opportunity as we start to continue to look with budgets and all of that and, and Mr. Gilligan. To say, you know, we've never met our goal, right? Yes, we've moved our goal, but we're, we're still there.
Okay, so I, so 15%?
Yeah, that's good, that's a good point.
But we just need to be realistic, we might not get there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But we might. Just as long, I, I apologize, it wasn't 320 kindergarteners, it's 330 that we stay below 22, so. I apologize, I was, in my head, I was like, I made a mistake and I knew it, so, so.
But again, because you can deal out the kids across those classrooms.
Correct.
For some reason you have 15 classrooms, then you, I mean.
They'll be within one. The other thing it does is just a reminder, if we do, if, if we have to and we have 350 kindergartners come, we do have that 16th classroom.
Right.
And so again, we're not only having space in our elementaries, we're going to have space in the K.
Right.
So we can adapt to that and, and have, you know, as staffing goes on, we do that late in the spring, we staff the classrooms. I mean, we, we have our best guess right now, but we do it in the spring. So we could always open the 16th if 350 kids show up. Yep.
Well, and actually, I, you know, you might not know this off the top of your head, but if you took the kindergarten population this year and if you were in that K building this year, would you have been able?
All of them would have been below, so it was 310, so 20.
21, right there.
321, yeah, we would have been 21.
So that would have changed that number right there if you were already in the building, yeah.
It would have been done this year.
Right.
So let me ask you this question. So obviously, you know, next year we'll have all of the kids in the kindergarten center to be named, someone. I think as Mr. Gilligan kind of mentioned, two summers or so ago, we really struggled with redistricting, closing some classrooms. I think first grade was one in a couple of schools. How different do you think the conversations may be, right? Where we're coming from, you know, everybody kind of coming into this one kindergarten center and then not feeling like they're being, they're, they're moving anyway onto that. So if, if first year becomes a little bit of a bubble year, which I think it has in a couple of individual buildings. To kind of say, well, I know your neighborhood school might be Franklin, but, you know, kid's just right there or Atkinson or, you know, that, because they're of the proximity of four of our schools.
Yeah, so I would say a few things. I think first of all, the hardest thing for us to staff is we don't know who's going to show up in K. So we will have a really good understanding when we look at the K building out of those 330 students, how many would be districted for one school or the other. So that gives us those numbers, right? The other thing is we have the space in the classroom. So if we want to open up a third K at Thompson, we can do that. If we want to have, you know, we're going to be able to actually adapt. So if we have 60, just to just use Thompson example, if we have 65 kids who are Thompson at the K, we'll then know to open three. First grades, right? It just makes it very, it makes it easier to know and because we have the space, we can know. You know, we're going to need three here, two here. In an effort to maintain neighborhoods, class, uh, schools much more than we currently are able to do that. Because what happens now is we take the best guess of how many kindergarteners, kindergartens to open at each school. And then we say, like this year, for instance, we should have opened up another K at Franklin. Atkinson, but we didn't know. And so we had to move a lot of the Atkinson kids to Thompson. What do you, you do this.
The thing is, like, the year we had to redistrict a few Franklin kids.
Right.
If we had the space, we could have put a teacher in there, we had a teacher that year, but we didn't have the space. You know, because we just have to have an overflow.
Right, right.
And then secondly, right now, there's only one class capped. Atkinson was capped in kindergarten and had to move out. So there's one spot open in Atkinson in kindergarten and the fifth grade at Thompson. I mean, that has just never happened.
Of course, the one class that is capped in the entire district is the chairs, kids class, just want to.
And they're doing.
Comment, I, I just want to make sure that everyone knows we're equal around here then.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, you know, in the sense of what we have currently, if that trajectory stays the same or even in that, in the teens, the space.
I'm just thinking about it, you know, with, with the reshuffling, moving out.
But we can reshuffle in advance and our hope is to really maintain the neighborhood school feel if we can.
Right, I like it.
I was hearing, I don't know if I was hearing your question differently, Mr. McDevitt. But were you saying that since the kindergarten, they'd all be in one place now? If the neighborhood school, even though here there are so many close proximity, let's say you're supposed to go to Thompson, but that happens to be kind of big. Would you offer the people to go to Atkinson instead or?
That's what we do, I mean, we always have to worry about busing.
Right, okay.
Because if we involuntarily transfer some, we have to provide.
Right, okay, all right, but if you gave them, okay, all right.
I, I was more thinking in terms of how do you then reshuffle or how do you predict that first grade?
Right, got it, okay.
And pieces there.
So we voted to approve these, we're just going to change that 10% to 15%? Is that what the?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So I will make a motion to approve the fiscal year 19 budget directives with the only update from the document being the 15% in the second bullet there.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt. Second by Ms. Picard. In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Thank you.
Makes sense.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There's no objection, maybe we could go to 10C, so Ms. Murphy doesn't sit here any longer except going through all our community dates?
That sounds perfectly fine. Anybody have any objection to that? I think it sounds fine to me to go to 10C, the first reading of the school meal charge policy that we heard the students talk a little bit about earlier.
Talk about modifying our current procedure. We have a procedure that was approved in 2011. As of July 1, 2017, federal regulation has now required all school food authorities to have a written meal charge policy on file. So what you see on one of your handouts is just, you know, six or seven sentences that really needed to have, do they not have the previous one?
Yes.
Just needed to be modified to include à la carte purchases, milk purchases, things like that. So I wrote with some of my peers some language for our meal charge policy. And then I met with Suzanne Egan to help edit and make sure we stuck to the policy. So we're not necessarily changing what we're currently doing. We still want to offer allowing students who have a point-of-sale account, the opportunity to charge three meals. So at the elementary school, every student is allowed to charge up to $7.50. $9 at the middle school. We do not, nor have we had charging allowed at the high school. And I should share with you that although we do spend some time collecting money from students, it is not a huge job for us because of the current procedure that we have in place. I owe a lot of that to the support of guidance counselors, principals and other support staff if we ever have an issue with somebody who may not be sending in lunch money. I also should share that there's a new policy this year that if in fact, and this is actually to talk about the, with the student who had a concern about a student who has a reduced or a meal benefit, how that would impact that student. Student who, who receives reduced lunch is allowed to get a lunch at 40 cents. So if they're allowed to charge up to $5 at the high school, that's about 12 lunches. So we will note anything in excess of five to six charges. And if it starts to get excessive, we'll contact the guidance counselor, we'll contact a principal. And there's a new policy this year from USDA that an administrator can approve a child based on what an administrator knows. We don't necessarily need to have parent input. So I think that would help remedy any student that has a meal benefit, that if there was a higher benefit needed, a principal or an administrator could step in and.
And that's pre-K to 12.
Correct, correct, so. Their other concern was allowing à la carte purchases. I just want to remind everyone, I'd like to tell the kids too, that we're in the business of offering healthy nutritious meals. That's what our goal is to provide to all of the kids. Although there are approved snacks in the school lunch program, we work hard to provide meals. And that's what we want to see the kids have. So if in fact they do not have money in their account. So if in fact they do not have money in their account, we don't allow them to buy an à la carte item. We prefer, we will always offer them a meal.
Right.
We will never deny anybody food because they're not going to learn, they're not gonna be successful in the classroom if they're not fed, so. We rewrote the policy just to expand on our last procedure, and just wanted to hopefully have this input into the handbook at some point, so that parents, students, staff are all aware as to how we have accountability for students that charge meals. So USDA and federal regulation was written because we're a fortunate school district. There are a lot of school districts that are thousands of thousands of dollars in the red due to unpaid meal charges. And at the end of the school year, it's actually the responsibility of the school department or the town to reimburse the school lunch program. So we haven't gotten there. We've had the support of the principals and the guidance counselors. They help, you know, toward the end of the year, usually the first of May, we provide lists, and together we ensure that we don't, are not owed an extensive amount of money at the end of the school year. So that was our intent for writing this current policy, with the hope that we could now include that we do not allow the charging of à la carte foods.
Which constitutes snacky items.
Correct, although these snacky items are, you know, nutritious, you know, scientifically sound, and so, you know, it's just that we prefer to provide lunch.
So Erica, you're saying, just so I'm clear, because I'm looking at the policy, that if a kid doesn't, their point-of-sale is empty, they go up there to buy an à la carte item.
Correct.
But this is the first time, you could say, you know what, we do have the school lunch, and they can charge up to five dollars before you follow through on it.
At the high school, that's correct.
So I wonder if, given the students' comments, if there's any way we could put that in here?
That they could judge.
The five dollars or something like that?
Sure.
I just, I just think it seemed like it was important.
Yes, because it wasn't the procedure at one time, and we could certainly include that, and he asked for statistics, and though I don't have actual amount owed today, but if we allow forty-six hundred students or fourteen hundred students at the high school to borrow five dollars, or charge up to five dollars, it's seventy-three hundred dollars. So that's a bigger mountain in school lunch world.
But you haven't been running into problems like this?
No.
And you haven't been running into kids who have no access to food, because you would?
That's correct. There's been an occasion, if a student is too shy to come into the classroom, into the cafeteria that doesn't have money, they will go to the school nurse, or go to a guidance counselor. They'll make a quick phone call, we'll hand deliver a meal if we need to.
I don't remember exactly when, but I think two years ago, for example, Kittredge went to point-of-service, sales only, right, so there was no cash transaction. How long has the high school kind of had that? I feel like they had it earlier, but I'm wondering, is that, like, my kids don't know any, they don't really remember kinda bringing in cash, so is this kind of, like, phasing itself out?
The high school still can bring in cash, yes.
Okay. But have those kids, how long have they had the point-of-service kind of offering there? Because what I'm thinking is, like, it took, also, like, we were like, what do you mean, we've set it up, we have to add money in, like.
We've had a point-of-service for probably eight or nine years.
Okay.
Yeah, eight or nine years, and just since two thousand and twelve is our newest point-of-sale provider. It's just a better program that fits our district better.
But you still do, like, so Kittredge doesn't take cash at all?
No.
No, not at all.
Because I've never even set up the point-of-sale, because my kids almost always pack, but if not, they take cash.
Right.
So I didn't even realize that, okay.
Yeah, and that was, what I was trying to get at is, like, for my kids, it's the norm, right? But I'm feeling like in other schools, that's not, and I'm sure there's probably some reasons why we've rolled it out in some schools and not others, but I can see why.
My kid would have no idea.
Right. There are two other schools I know considering going to no cash after the first of the year.
Okay.
Because it speeds up the lunch line, there's less opening on Ziploc bags, and.
Right.
Yeah, the sealed envelope, you know, so there's like a trash.
There were some days it was dimes.
But I'm sure in some cases, there are families who don't use credit cards, so they could never
Exactly.
do a point-of-sale situation.
They could send in a check for a point-of-sale.
Right, oh, that's a good point.
And they come to the office and pay cash if they wish.
I've heard quite a few high school students say, I don't use my POS because I forgot my PIN number. You can look that up, right? I mean, all they need to do is walk up and say, my name is.
Even Caitlin said that.
Absolutely, yeah, very quickly, yeah.
So that's, that's an interesting thing, because even our student representative said that she didn't do that, and my son says that all the time, he's had twenty dollars in his POS since he was at Thompson School. He's now got a goal to never use it.
Right, right.
Well, that's what I wanted to add.
Well, maybe that goes into this fund that the, that the, that the suggestion.
We do have a similar fund.
You do?
We do, and we don't call it a refugee fund, but it is, at the end of every school year, we ask all graduating seniors and their families if there isn't a balance in their account, if they want to take that balance and transfer it to a sibling, receive a refund, or they can donate it into an account for students that forget their lunch money.
That's fantastic.
Currently, there's about seven hundred dollars in the account, but what we mostly use it for is students who've left a district, and we haven't been able to, you know, receive any of the funds back after trying, you know, emails, phone calls, or something like that. But we will also use it for the student that doesn't have money, you know, on that day.
That's great.
Yep.
And another question. I don't remember what my question was, I think it was off of something Mrs. Picard said, I mean, I actually like the conversation, or the email communication that comes out with the receipt, right, so I can see what they've spent it on, and I love how it says ice cream and bottles of water and all of that stuff. My head goes flying through the air.
Because you can't pack ice cream.
Well, no, but you, I do pack your water bottle every day.
Oh, and then they buy one.
So I tried.
It's scientifically approved ice cream, so you know.
Is there any way for that PIN number to get incorporated into Power School? I know.
It is.
I thought it was there.
It is, okay, because I, so there's really no excuse that they don't know their PIN.
It's always at the top of every statement.
No, but like, the app.
We'll electrocute Caitlin, we're gonna electrocute Caitlin next time she comes in here.
You should know that PIN.
So like, we have the Power School app, right, because I have the parent version, right?
Oh, okay.
Do the kids have their PINs there? I mean, is that just a stupid question?
I don't know, in Power School, do they, I don't know that. I'm assuming, yes, I know Alicia uploads in my grant all of that information.
All right, I mean, I just thought that was.
Yeah, there's gotta be a notes tab or something where that could be.
All right.
You know, since we're talking about technology, I just wanna give a big shout out to Erica, that they, their website is so fantastic. You can go on there and see so much about the nutrition program in our schools. And have you got the function working where you can hover over a menu item and it'll tell you the ingredients and?
Yes, all the ingredients, all the nutritional information. It's been a world, a great resource for the school nurses.
It's really good.
Yeah.
I think my only concern with this is really at the high school level, just making sure that the safety net is there. You know, I don't certainly want a kid to have the stigma of, you know, getting a yellow slip or, you know, whatever, to go to the cafeteria and get their meal for free, but I'm not necessarily sure how that is, but I wanna make sure that those are the kids who I think easily fall through the cracks.
I've never known a student to go to the cafeteria with a yellow slip.
Just like a pass, is what I mean, right, like, here's my lunch.
So discretion, you're looking at.
Right.
Every student has a PIN, and each PIN has a coating in it, and it's only the staff at school lunch that knows anything about it, so there's.
That is such a huge change from when it used to be that kids who are on free and reduce would go to a separate line, or they would pay a separate amount.
It is, yes. Exactly. Yeah, oh, no, 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 no.
The stigma, being able to go to a point-of-sale
Right.
just eliminated the stigma
Exactly.
for kids.
I remember the blue and the yellow cards that they passed out in elementary school, and you were like, okay, so you get free, you get reduced, you know.
Yeah, no longer.
Very good point.
Contracted with to do the free and reduced lunch. I oftentimes help parents in here, especially non-English speakers who come in, it is super easy to do, we can help them right through.
Right.
And it's very confidential, easy to do, and it's so much easier than the old days of paper. And that's a newer few years.
Yeah, since two thousand and twelve, exactly. Transportation.
Program, yeah.
Community programs.
So once you've kind of worked through all the paperwork and authorized it, you can project that to other resources.
You just gotta do it each time, and now it's just one time.
That's great.
Start through school lunch, and then the parent can decide who they wanna share with.
Right, very good.
So I will certainly entertain bringing back the five dollars.
It just seems like if you're doing it, you might as well put it in there.
I think I agree.
I agree, and again, you know, that's what we have in place now, and it's really, I'm not gonna say we don't spend time doing collections, but we do, but it's not to the extent that I know some of the other school districts are doing. So I think by us having the procedure starting in two thousand and eleven, which was at, you know, the school district's discretion to have this procedure, we weren't mandated to have it, it's been to our benefit over these years.
Can I just ask another quick question? If a student falls below, and they're gonna hit that five dollar threshold, like, I'm gonna make this up, three times in a calendar year, right? Is there a trigger that goes to a guidance counselor, or a social worker, or somebody who says, you know what, next time you see Andrew McDevitt, reach out, figure out if there's something going on?
Yes, and that's why we made mention of that in the new policy.
Okay.
We will make sure that if we see, you know, any type of
Pattern.
Pattern, that we will discuss it with the school principal first to see if there's anything they know, or a guidance counselor.
Awesome.
Because it's actually at that high school level when sometimes they're moving away from parent supporter, or being pushed away from parent supporter, what have you, that they're a little lost for a while, and someone needs to be able to guide them.
Some families don't even realize that a meal benefit might be an option, so it's always good to be able to reach out, and it's a great resource.
Yeah, no, I'm in favor of, you know, the changes, I just, I really wanna make sure that they're, that the policy reflects what I think you actually do, which is great. And I would like to say, just for the record, I love having you come to the meetings, because you always bring really good things, and I know Mrs. Terese and I both said we hadn't had dinner yet, so we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
This is not good.
So now we're back to the.
I will try one of these.
I'm gonna try this. Yeah, so we are on to the first new business, which would be right, we didn't miss anything else.
Overnight trip?
We did the overnight trip, so we're now the first reading of the additional positions.
Yeah, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Mealy.
I'm gonna eat this treat.
So we have two additional positions that you read in the cover sheet for this. There's a need for a district-wide board-certified behavior analyst, also known as a BCBA one point O, that's, as I said, district-wide. And the funding for that, we have reduced the contracted services by quite a bit. We budgeted a reduction, but we've also seen a reduction in those expenses for this year of another forty thousand dollars. So we would, we would use the forty thousand dollars to pay for this position, and just like all other additions, it's only approved for the end of this year, would have to be included in a budget and approved for the coming year as well. In which case, for this one in particular, we would reduce that contracted services line again, and propose moving the money into the BCA, BCBA position to cover it.
Just a reminder, we use this position for the home services. We used to contract close to a quarter of a million dollars to provide home services. This year, we're looking at a number of about thirty thousand dollars. And we've taken those savings and hired BCBAs and BTs to support our students, not only at home, but also during the day. It has been a stunning success, I think, and we took a leap, believing that we shouldn't be paying a quarter of a million dollars for these home services. So we're providing the home services, I think the families are happy with the connection to school, and then we're allowed to use the staff members to also support kids during the day.
Because it used to be outside, you contracted.
We contracted out with outside agencies that would mostly do home and do some consulting in the day, but now these are people who work for us. And it's a lot of continuity, and it also gives our people additional funds. I mean, it's an extra job to be able to do in the home services, so it's, it's a win-win. The challenge is, I think we're servicing, just, do you remember the number of kids we're servicing? We have one BCBA overseeing the whole program, I think we're servicing close to fifty kids, we need another BCBA to support that, right?
And if the parents are happy with the service?
Yes, and if they aren't, they have, you know.
They have the options, though.
Yeah, but the vast majority of the parents are much happier to have our people who are working with their kids during the day in the school system.
Tied together at home.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think it's an example of creative thinking, and then also being able to, and that, this person who we hire isn't just gonna be doing home services, they'll be doing BCBA support throughout the district during the day.
Mm-hmm. And then the second one is at the ECC speech and language pathologist, increasing a current point eight to a full one point O for the rest of the year. There's certainly been an increase in the number of early intervention students qualifying for services at ECC. And so in order to accommodate the services that are needed, we need to bump that up another point two. The estimated cost for that for the rest of the year is about six thousand dollars, we have nineteen thousand remaining in turnover savings, so it would reduce that from nineteen to thirteen, we would still have to get us through the year.
So this is a person already in place that you would just increase the hours?
Bump from a point eight to a one point zero.
Four days a week to five days a week.
Okay.
Yep.
Does that do anything as far as, like, health insurance or anything like that?
No, they're already eligible.
They're already eligible at that level?
Yes.
So basically, the timing of our meetings, is it beneficial for us to suspend the rules?
We would of course be happy with that.
Well, I'm just thinking, then you may be able to get someone hired who starts in January, right?
Yes, that would be the goal.
Okay, yep. So I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to vote on the two additional positions for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
I think for the record, the chair.
I think I entertain the motion, you can make the motion.
I make the motion.
I understood, yes.
I'll second.
Okay, so thank you, the motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Picard. Do we have, I think, roll call that, don't we? Yeah, Mr. Trissy?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Aye.
Ms. Picard?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Mabley, okay, so we've suspended the rules. Next, I would entertain a motion to vote to approve the addition of the two positions as was just discussed. Motion by Mr. Trissy, second by Mr. McDevitt, Mr. Trissy?
We can all say aye on this one.
Aye.
This one we can all say aye now, okay.
You said suspension.
I need, there's no clear reason for any of this.
It's only halfway through your tenure, but that's right.
Okay, I don't see the difference between the two things, okay, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Great, all right. Now we are on to the dates.
In the calendar.
So I do know that we do have dates smack in the middle that we need to look at. But first, Mr. McDevitt, you have a conflict on February fifteenth, correct?
I do have a conflict on the fifteenth, sorry, oh, you know, I was on, sorry, seventeen, the fifteenth, yes.
I have to open my calendar. Yes, so, but we will be through the budget scene at that point, right? So.
Before we get to the fifteenth of February, can we talk about the budget calendar for January? I know we set those dates, but maybe the suggestion would alleviate Mr. McDevitt's problem as well. I always find, in my three, four years doing this now, we don't need the four dates in January that we, well, the fourth, and February first. I think right now we have January fourth, eighteenth, twenty-fifth, and February first, that's four meetings inside of five weeks.
And we should have already voted the budget by the fifteenth.
We had to vote it before the fifteenth, but I'm saying.
Right, that's what I'm missing, it would already be done.
It seems to me that, you know.
You're asking, do we need the fifteenth at all?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that the first four, the first four meetings of the year, I always find that we don't need all four meetings. If you go January fourth, January eighteenth, January twenty-fifth, and February first, those four meetings inside of five weeks. Do we need all four of those meetings, and if that's not, if we don't, then maybe we can move the fifth, February fifteenth to February eighth, so that would alleviate his problem.
The way it plays out is, on the fourth is the presentation from the superintendent. The following meeting is following up, no, following up any questions that were. No, following up any questions that were generated from the presentation and in the days in between the next meeting. The twenty-fifth is the public hearing, which you have to have, and then the first is voting.
Voting.
Is, is there any?
And I would just say that in the three years I've done that, you know, all those things, first of all, it's redundant doing the presentation, because no matter what you do to the presentation, there's questions. I think you could do the public hearing and our questions on, on the same day. That's what I, what I've experienced. I just know, even though you're gonna present for the first time on the fourth, whatever it is, we're still gonna ask questions, and then there'll be a handful of other questions on, it, it just seems like we're wasting a week.
Can I ask, is there any reason why we don't do the public hearing and the vote on the same night? I felt like in my time, we've done the public hearing, and then we've, public come or not come, and then we leave, and then we come back the following week. Is there any way we could do the public hearing and the vote on the twenty-fifth?
There's no reason.
But if anything came up during the public hearing, you'd have no way to react to that.
Right.
I don't think, I would rather put the other two things together, our questions in a public hearing, than to put the vote.
That was not, that has been the case, that, that there really hasn't been anything that's come back.
Mm-hmm.
But that was not the case.
Exactly. It's the product of the past where you were going to have some things to respond to.
And there was some very interesting debate on what was being added, what was.
What was being cut.
Cut. So, so that's the history.
All right, I know, the, the recent history has been that it has been like that.
Right.
And obviously, if there was something crazy, controversial, you know, if all those folks right there, you know, besieged us, we could schedule a meeting.
I mean, it was like during the, the world languages switcheroo and all that. I mean, all those caused a lot of public comment, so.
We, we may have a lot of public comment if we're, you know, if we have any challenges as we're working on our staffing issues.
And not adding programs or, you know, doing things of that nature. I, I think we could probably do public comment in our questions together.
That's what you first proposed, yeah. Yeah.
But not vote on that.
I agree.
Right.
I wouldn't pair the vote together.
Because I'm of the, of the mind that I'd rather have less, if we have, I'd rather have a longer meeting than have to schedule four Thursday nights in five weeks. So if we did that, could we, could we say, go four, eleven, twenty-five? I'm, I'm, I'm in January.
I'm in January too, but then, okay.
Or, or.
Why, why don't leave four, eighteen, twenty-five?
Yeah, four, that's, I'm sorry, that's what I meant. Four, eighteen, twenty-five, and then instead of the first and the fifteenth, just give us the eighth.
The eighth, because that's right before break, so that's one.
That's our reason. So I, I don't know what our break is. I may get a dodge on that, on that fifteenth as well. But if we have, so instead of doing February first and February fifteenth, just do February eighth.
That, I can do that. Can you all do February eighth as far as you've seen?
I would just ask that we check the school calendar and see if there's other things going on that day that would.
We can. We'll double check.
Yep.
Because we're not voting on this tonight anyway.
And check with the town manager.
Right. I don't think the eighth is going to impact them, but just to make sure.
Yep.
Yep.
Why would it, no, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on the budget. We'll, we'll probably vote on the twenty-fifth.
Oh.
We'll vote on January twenty-fifth.
And it's not a problem.
Right.
So early.
And the reality is, if we have for some reason need more time, I don't think the eighth would be a huge problem.
Exactly.
Right.
I don't think so either, but twenty-fifth.
Yes. And that takes care of the fifteenth issue, because we're also gonna run into some other further down the line here.
Right, I mean, that's just, it's bumping right up to.
Vacation.
Right, right.
Vacation week.
Mm-hmm.
So are we saying not the first, not the fifteenth, but the eighth instead?
Yes.
Yes.
Because we previously voted, I think, those are the dates, the fourth, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth.
Yes.
We did, so. So four, eighteen, twenty-five, and then the eighth.
I might be flying back that day, but.
On the eighth?
Yeah, I have an opportunity to maybe meet DeVos, so I may go do that, but I'll come back.
Really?
Mm-hmm. I'm not sure I want to. I said that on public camera, but that's okay, I'm allowed to.
Okay. So what we're, so that's what we're looking at for right now, and we have to investigate that, so I'll recap at the end. All right, are there any conflicts with March first? I can tell you, so we took care of Mr. McDevitt, okay. There is a conflict with April fifth. So.
That's me. I can't be here that night, so.
So if you look at the calendar, which is what I did when I was at home, we could either move to April twelfth instead, or back up to March twenty-ninth, but then you have three meetings in March. If that troubles anyone. April, we don't have a lot of flexibility because of another vacation window in there, but, so you could either go March first, March fifteenth, March twenty-ninth, April twenty-sixth, or first, fifteenth, April twelfth, April twenty-sixth.
I'm, I'm just thinking in, in April, I could be wrong here, but what's the vacation week? I think it's the sixteenth?
The sixteenth.
It's the sixteenth.
Sixteenth, so we may have the same pattern if we kept April twelfth.
Right.
Because that bumps into the week, so.
Right. You're saying, so we might run into people leaving early, is that what you're saying? Yeah.
You have the conflict the fifth, Dr. Price, right?
Mm-hmm, April fifth. So we're looking at really the twelfth, which you're saying vacation, or back up to March twenty-ninth.
To twenty-ninth.
Maybe that'd be part of his entry plan.
Yeah, I just wanna be honest, I, I can't be here that night, so.
Yep. Well, I would say most important on this decision would be you, Mrs. Lynch, and Mrs. Picard, because that will be after the election, and David and I may or may not be here, so.
Yeah, I'm good either, Dave. I just, I don't know, there, it's gonna be a long period of time.
I wasn't gonna say that.
It, it's gonna be like a month on, either way.
Right, right.
We do April twelfth, that's almost a month from March fifteenth, and if we do.
Yes.
Yep.
Right, but, but because of vacation, the way it falls is kind of unavoidable. It still gives us meetings before town meeting, which is helpful.
Well, what would be on the agenda for that April fifth meeting?
I was thinking.
So there's a time.
Isn't that kind of the window when we went to Atkinson last year?
Yes, that's when we did a visit.
We went a little bit earlier than that, but, yeah, it was that window.
So if we go for the, if we go for the April date, we're less likely to have snow.
Or do we, I mean, do we just have the meeting without you?
Your choice. I just wanna let you know I can't be here.
Right.
March twenty-ninth is Holy Thursday.
It is?
It is. Oh, then we can't do that then, then that's out, yeah.
Right, I believe it is. It's really early this year. Snow, Holy Thursday.
Well, I just know we're, we're sensitive on that, you know.
No, that, that, that's not an appropriate night.
The Jewish and the Christian holidays of Good Friday and.
All the Haitians in town love to have it that day.
It is because.
And Monday Thursday.
Yeah, so March twenty-ninth.
I think it's called.
Oftentimes, Good Friday's right before vacation, and for this, it's really early.
It's, it's early this year.
So April twelfth is the day we're looking at.
Or the fifth.
Or we keep, keep the fifth and just Dr. Price isn't there.
Oh, okay, either way.
Why don't we keep it as is, and then we can adapt if there's something that's really critical that we.
And then we could later switch around.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and if we're going to visit someplace.
That sounds good. And it's very hard to go this far, I know it's awkward. All right, did anyone have any other conflicts through the rest of the dates that they know of today?
When is town meeting again? Is it the fifteenth?
Yep.
Okay, I thought so, but.
Yep.
Sometimes I know it's the week after.
Yep.
Does that mean you're running for reelection if you're thinking that far?
No, I'm just thinking of town meeting. So just as we look at the calendar, I know we always post the fifteenth as well.
Mm-hmm. It was actually on something that I saw online, so to make sure. It was on the online version, it's just not on here, yeah.
Yeah, okay, no, that's fine.
June seventh is the night before graduation. That's not scholarship night, is it?
Usually is.
So June seventh doesn't work either.
Or is it the Wednesday?
I thought it was the Wednesday.
Thursday and day.
It's the Wednesday. It was, I can tell you what it was this past year. It was, I'm pretty sure it was the Wednesday night.
Problem is usually Monday, and then there's, it's either Wednesday or Thursday.
My calendar deletes it because it's too old. I'm pretty sure it was the Wednesday night was scholarship night.
Hold on, I can go back.
I can go back as well.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring my phone.
No, and, and.
No, I'm in July.
Friday the ninth is graduation.
Yes.
Friday the eighth, no?
I mean, that's, I'm, I'm, I moved back to the other month's, other calendar year, sorry, I moved back.
Is that the eighth, Jen, or the seventh?
No, it's a Freaky Friday.
Sorry. Yeah, June eighth is graduation, yeah.
See if I had my paper calendar, I would know.
Yeah, I don't have it here.
I don't have it either.
Must have been. We can find out.
Well, I can check as well, but obviously, if that's the case, we, that we can't have it.
We can check with Chad.
First read, you're right, we'll find out. All right, so just to recap, we're looking at deleting February first and February fifteenth
in favor of putting in February eighth, and then keeping the rest as is with a possible April twelfth instead of April fifth.
If my presence is necessary.
That's right, and we can decide that a little further into the new year, and then we'll double check on June seventh is this scholarship night.
Correct.
Great.
It's not on the calendar.
We'll double check, we'll find out.
We'll figure it out.
I didn't see it listed yet, but I know graduation was, so it's, I, I think it's usually the Wednesday, yeah. All right, great. So we'll look at that the next time, the twenty-first. Thank you. All right, and then if you can give us an update on Dr. Price on the principal search at the middle school.
Correct. Met today with the parents at the middle school. Thank you very much for being there, Ms. Mabley.
I'm a parent.
You are a parent. And the timeline went out to all the parents. We sent out a letter. I sent it to you guys, and.
No, fifth to eighth grade, that was nice.
Fifth to eighth grades, we include fifth grade parents. Just a few reminders of important time, timelines here. By December eighteenth, if people are interested in being on the search, they need to email Carrie Walberg, which was in the letter. We'll put the search together. Carrie and I are going to chair that search. We thought it made a lot of sense for me to chair it, given that, that ultimately the decision is going to be mine with Mr. Gilligan. And if we disagree, which I would be stunned if we do, it is ultimately his decision. So I felt it made sense for me to chair the first round. I think this is an incredibly important hire for the North Andover Public Schools, so look forward to really spending some significant time on this one. We posted the job on Monday. It closes in early January, right after the holiday break, and our goal is to have somebody appointed before the February break with people coming into town February seventh, eighth, and ninth, maybe just the seventh and the ninth, and we'll do our finalist rounds then, where everyone will get an opportunity to meet the finalists and give us feedback, as has been our process in the past. And then just to kind of who the committee is, on the back here, you'll see, pretty similar to what we've done during my tenure here, is some faculty members, department coordinator, administrator, some parents. We love to include students. And then some staff members. That's actually an increase from the high school principal search. We felt that including TAs and administrative assistants, we wanted two, not just one. And then one community member is kind of our wild card. It allows us, if it's a parent, if it's a, you know, whomever makes sense. So that's kind of the makeup of the search committee, which we'll put together right before the holiday break.
Correct.
Very good.
And we are launched. And it was great too today. We asked the parents and we asked the staff last week to basically share with us what they're looking for in the next principal of NAMs, and we got a lot of really good feedback.